Evening and welcome to this September twenty nine, two thousand and twenty five special meeting. Nice meeting is brought to you live using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. And the recording will be posted on the city YouTube channel. So clerk team, would you please call the roll?
That's number Benson.
Here.
That's number one. That's number Holloway. Councilmember Washington.
Here.
Councilmember Hutton.
Here.
Councilmember Trishison.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
I'm here. Um, there's two councilmembers, Councilwoman Watan and Councilwoman Holloway. We're gonna excuse them until they arrive.
Some of them.
Some of them.
So.
Councilperson Johnson, say my. Councilperson Trishison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And pose a. And Austin's um, excusing both of Councilwoman Watan and Reverend Holloway. Um, so the first item for the business is to improve the agenda. Councilmember has motion to approve the agenda. So much.
Second.
Move by. Councilwoman Washington. Any discussion? So agenda is strategic plan approved itself. Any discussion? And then all of the things say aye. And pose a aye. And the motion passes that the agenda is improved. This to. Of introducing Brian Murphy and Maddie Yimmel. For presentation and discussion today.
Hey Mayor, good evening, members counsel. Very glad to be back with you all again this evening. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. I'm Brian Murphy, the project manager with the Burke team.
And I'm Maddie Yimmel, um, lead analyst on this project and engagement support as well.
Alright, so um, our agenda this evening is perhaps a little bit unusual for a council meeting. It's a good work session kind of activity. Maddie and I are gonna set the stage a little bit, give some background and do an overview of the strategic plan. But for about an hour within the middle of our meeting, we'd really like to get. You all as council members up and help us like modify the document. Um, hopefully you've had a chance to review that. We have it printed on posters here. We're armed with lots of posters with uh, uh Sharpies. Uh, and we're gonna pass those over to you and ask for your help in marking that up and then we'll have some discussion. And a share out on that. But let's um, I'll help set the stage and then we'll kind of move more into that activity. The thing I will say before we delve into the context. Is that what we're talking about tonight is the content in the public facing strategic plan. So one way you might think of that, and I'll actually skip ahead for just a moment here. Is that it's the top of the iceberg. So we're gonna be talking about the vision and the goals and the strategies and how you will implement. But we're not really talking about the year to year work planning that has to happen underneath this five year strategic plan. So every year you'll go through a process where you're getting a level more detailed than what we have on the posters tonight. And you're working with staff to identify what's the work plan for the coming year. So just bear in mind as we do the work tonight, we are looking at the higher level strategic plan. So it's it's more at the vision, goals and strategies level, less at the tactical level. But we'll start to dip our toe a little bit into some of the work plan items. So before we dive into content, let's just set the stage with some where we are in the process.
Yeah, so we're here at the council session, end of September, but just a reminder of where we've been with you all. Kind of a long process doing engagement with the community, um, hearing feedback from them. Visiting with you and engaging um, with both staff and council a few times. The last time was um, August fifteenth here in this room. Where we got some great ideas around guiding principles, vision, um, talking about strategies. We then brought that information to staff September fifteenth. And really um, dove a little bit deeper, especially on the goals and strategy side, asking staff for their input, getting feedback. And then that is what we developed into the plan that we're bringing today. So more fully developed guiding principles, vision statement. Mission um, as well as wanting to confirm the goals and strategies and being able to have that uh, as discussion for council. We're moving towards um. Hopefully adoption at the November tenth council meeting. And so really the next phase is uh, finalizing. Putting the uh, public facing strategic plan into a beautifully laid out document. And going back to the community, um, posting it on the website and asking for reactions or feedback. So we can get to that final product in the next couple of months. Any questions about where we've been process wise before we dive into what we're focusing on today?
Alright, so you'll recognize a few of these slides that we wanted to bring in towards the beginning just to help set the stage and remind ourselves of why are we here? So the city is doing a strategic plan and we always come back to this graphic. It's kind of about getting alignment between your community. Your policymakers, your city council, um, and your staff. As all three of these groups have a lot of roles to play in the future of the community. And really to do well as a community, you need a shared understanding of what's our context right now? Where are we now? Really importantly, where do we want to go in the future? What's our vision? Um, and then what are the constraints that we need to work with and the strategies by which we'll do the work? So in doing that, we have to acknowledge you can't do everything. So it's really about identifying priorities. Because this is happening sort of in addition to or on on top of the day to day business of running a a city. So as I mentioned, we're. We're in the strategic planning process. It's guided by this twenty year vision of the future of the of the city of Snoqualmie, of the community of Snoqualmie. It's anchored by a few goals and strategies. We don't try to predict in three or four years, what's the next step in the plan? We're gonna set you up with a a cycle and implementation framework, and that's kind of represented in this calendar on the last page. You do a biennial budget, and so it's important that you're looking at. The strategic plan as you do your biennial budgeting and as you do your annual budget updates, that you're thinking about the strategic plan. And allocating resources and setting staff work plans to kind of advance that strategic plan. Some of the implementation implementation tactics. We will help you develop a year one work plan or a year one implementation plan. That doesn't necessarily go up on the city's website. It's more an internal tool for council and staff to use in advancing the strategic plan. But we did note in the in the annual strategy or annual calendar rather, that you might want to give an update. Say, here's what we've done in the past year to advance this strategic plan. Here's the progress we've made. Here's our focus for the coming year. So let's set the table a little bit for what it is that the strategy is starting to focus on. So a key exhibit from the the work that we've done together, if you remember. From the August fifteenth meeting, we had these placemats and we brought forward a lot of information with data. And also um, some insights from the community engagement that Maddie and Issa were involved with and staff were involved with. A big focus that we want to bring to this is that. You've had a tremendous amount of growth as a community and many of you were here for that and you've experienced it and you've seen it. You were the fastest growing uh, city in the state for a period of time. And that growth has really flattened out. And so it's a pivot point in the evolution of a community. Your community is gonna experience that and also you've been experiencing it as a city organization for a number of years and. You can think like when you're rapidly growing, there's all kinds of things you need your staff to do. And then when you start to like. Sort of have a more stable population, you want to shift and have that focus be on something else. You also focus in terms of development, right? So with little undeveloped land remaining, the focus is more on infill and redevelopment. It's about making your neighborhoods function really well. It's about connecting your neighborhoods. Um, and there's some exciting stuff happening now to. Connect the falls to downtown and the like. And it's about thinking about how you can use your assets as effectively as possible. So it's really different context than where you've been. This page is, I could use to kind of tell the story of your strategic plan as we've got it laid out in these different topic areas. And what the benefits are that that we're hoping to see from that. And so it really starts with looking at your land supply and how you focus on infill. Housing and multifamily housing in your existing neighborhoods. That helps build more population in your community. It also helps make it welcoming. You all focused on August fifteenth on being a really welcoming community with housing that's available to people at different. Points in their life cycle and different walks of life. So helping create that that variety of housing um, is a big focus. Economic development, also a big focus. Looking at ways that you can retain your existing businesses, help them thrive. Maybe attract additional new businesses into town. And that has all kinds of benefits, right? It helps create local shopping services and entertainment. So folks can get, you know, their daily needs met here in town. There's more employment opportunities, both of which mean there's less travel in and out of the community, less commuting. Less traffic on the roads. There's more resilience. Um, and there's also a strength in tax base, uh, which is beneficial to the city. So we go from housing to economic development down to fiscal sustainability. Um, and with, you know, more commercial sales tax, um, other revenues coming into the city. Then you can continue to provide above average services for below average taxes and that supports quality of life. People want to move here, so it's kind of a virtuous cycle. And it's all supported by this really strong relationship between the city of Snoqualmie and the communities of Snoqualmie. So you're engaging in communication with your community, you're going out to events, you're building that trust. So I think that's kind of the the logic of the plan that we've been talking about. But I think it's it's important, we're gonna start to complicate the story a little bit because some of these things are hard. Some of these things are going to be challenging to do. And I don't mean hard in like impossible or hard in an absolute sense. We haven't done like all the analysis that one could do. On your housing strategies and your options or your economic development options. But we can talk about sort of forces or pressures or um, headwinds that you might face. And I think that's part of our planning process is to help identify what are those challenges. So then we can identify the strategies. No one said this would be easy, right? So we're trying to identify what are the challenges and the constraints. So we can stand up strategies to act against them. So we've talked, you know, first talking about housing. We've said there's limited developable land or undeveloped land. There's also a grow- growing regional population, so more people chasing the available housing. We're seeing cost inflation. We're also seeing high interest rates, all of which make affordable housing more and more challenging. And that's not true just for Snoqualmie, it's true for the whole. There's also the recent growth management hearings board ruling that really describes what is it that cities need to do? To try to provide housing that's available for people at different points um, in their economic lifespan. Um, and that's one we're gonna take a little bit more of a deep dive into. Maddie's gonna talk through some of the implications of that. Recent growth management hearings board ruling around Mercer Island and some of the challenges that creates. So I'll say tonight in a few different places, we're gonna try to stay at a fairly high level up in this um. In our pyramid, vision, goals and strategies. But we know the devil's in the details, so we're gonna like, kind of tap down into a little bit more detail in housing in particular. And if we have time in our next meeting uh, on October thirteenth, we'll also continue to talk more at a tactical level. On some of these topics. So what are the strategies we've identified on the housing side? First is to try to, you know, update your future land use map and your zoning map um, and talk about. Where it is that that you might see more dense uh, development in the future, um, where you might see infill and redevelopment. That those are changes to the community that your community is gonna be pretty interested in. And so you want to engage your community members in those conversations. You have a housing um, strategy plan, so we didn't try to recreate that in the strategic plan, but there's. Ways to advance the strategies that are identified in that that work that was done in two thousand and twenty three. And then working with regional partners um, in workforce housing. So this is kind of paraphrasing some of the strategies that are laid out over here and goals three around housing. For economic development, there's there's some of the same constraints that you face, that limited developable land. There's not a lot of greenfield development for commercial, so you're looking at again infill development. Your location in the region is is also a little bit challenging because you're out here on the eastern side of. The Puget Sound region or of King County and. Folks tend to move to the west to get their shopping and their their employment, right? If you're gonna open a large uh. Place of employment, you probably want it closer to the population center than out closer to the edge. There's competition and then it's just, it's hard for small cities to really affect economic development. There's limited staff capacity and limited levers that you can really. Move. A lot of your levers are around your developable land and um, your your land use planning and your your long range planning. So strategies that you can do is again engaging that community in conversations, supporting tourism. Which the city's been doing a lot to do, enhancing events and programming. And then trying to promote investment in the Snoqualmie Valley region overall and raise awareness of infill development opportunities within. City of Snoqualmie. With housing and economic development. On the fiscal side, we're looking for some of that economic development to help the city because. You do face some headwinds. A lot of these are are structural. They're challenges that other cities, that all cities face. The property tax cap we've talked about and how that is, you know, uh, increases that are less than the cost of inflation. For wages and healthcare, healthcare is gonna go up a lot. That's gonna be faster than the property taxes growing. And you also have the state and others sort of saying, okay, cities, you have to do these things, sort of like the the growth. Management hearing board is one of those mandates that cities have to do and respond to. So the strategies here at a high level are trying to make absolutely the most effective, efficient use of resources as it's possible. And some of that is shifting, not necessarily maintaining the same book of business as a city because you're growing a lot less. It's about shifting those resources uh, to focus less on growth and other and and focus on other things that are more current. Trying to maintain those current levels of service and your current assets and good good repair. Maybe, you know, spending more money on maintenance and operations of your existing assets before adding more. And then continuing to evaluate the community desire or need for for more services. And their appetite for more revenues if you want to increase those services or possibly is that pressure. From the structural limitations on property taxes, you may need to feel out your community for for new revenue sources. But we've demoted that in terms of like a go to strategy, right? There's other things that we're focusing on first and including economic development. So those are, those are all important, um, but you can't do any of that without support of the community. So there are strategies here that are about growing partnerships. So it's not just you, the city going out to community members and trying to engage with them, but it's using the community partners that are in the community nonprofits. And social groups and others. Going out to meet them where they're at. Um, we heard that Mona had great conversations by going out into city events that are happening in Snoqualmie and. You're likely to get more participation from those kinds of engagements than you are inviting folks into city hall. On a rainy Tuesday, Monday evening, right? Because people are busy. I mean, people are busy. There's lots of demands for their attention and so that there there's some challenges there. We also think you have a smart community. You have a well-educated community and sort of being honest with them and engaging with them. In some of the constraints and some of the challenges that we see on some of the other slides and asking for their understanding. Do you as council and as staff try to balance those constraints and the ability to provide services? There's a lot of strategies here around, you know, trying to reach your community. And your staff does a good job already of sort of putting out the e-blasts and social media. We're we're impressed by what the staff does. So these strategies that we have on the boards are sort of to augment that without necessarily sort of outstripping your your resources. And your ability to do that as a staff. So. We're back to that logic, right? So housing, economic development, helping to support the fiscal sustainability of the community. Have all done with support and buy-in of the community. We've tried to identify in your five year strategy, where do you want to focus first? Because as I said earlier, you can't do everything. You can't do everything at once. So we've identified in the plan that you've seen, the draft plan, these four areas of focus. Thinking that this would be where we would recommend you start to focus first. So it's about partnerships um, with community organizations. It's about continuing to make efficient use of resources. Supporting infill development and redevelopment and then looking to diversify your your housing options. And obviously both of these are kind of that that community development effort. So Mona and team would have a lot on her plate to advance, you know, these recommended areas of early focus. So we want to share some more information with you about sort of the the current evol- evolution of what's happening with the growth management hearings board. Decision and the like, but let me pause here and just see if. You have questions about what I've just shared and kind of the walkthrough of the strategic plan at a really pretty high level, but. Does this reflect the conversations we've had and yeah, councilmember.
Two things. Uh, first was with regard to diversifying council options. So one large, single family home versus on the same lot, a uh duplex or a fourplex. The fourplex will actually generate more uh, revenue uh, from that property tax because it'll be worth more. But the people living there actually pay less per household gets divided up. So you kind of get uh, that double benefit there. Which for the millionth time, I think we need to look at zoning things. And then the other thing I want to mention was about maybe back to when you had the uh, communication events with trust circle. Yeah, the meeting people where they're at. So I've been kind of thinking about why, why do we get so so little public comment? At our meetings, some other places get more, but it just seems to be the general thing that um. That it's hard for people to do that. And I think that part of it could be, uh, not that we should stop, of course we need to do it, but um, but that it. That being kind of our our one main opportunity for people to communicate with us. It could feel very intimidating, I think. I think your average person, I could imagine looking at that and thinking, oh, I'm gonna look at. All seven councilmembers and the mayor and those elite or the uh, management level uh, city staff. Uh, and I have to come prepared. Uh, I'm gonna be uh, on record stating my name and where I live and all that stuff. It just sounds very intimidating. So I think coming up with alternatives like a couple of councilmembers every once in a while hanging out at a pop shop with a sign or something like that. Could go some way at uh, meeting people where they're at. Just be a little less.
There we go. Yeah. No, I think coming to city hall is very intimidating, right? It's also, it's not where people go. You know, so like if you go to them, like you're more likely to encounter them. And both staff and council members, I think have had some good experiences, we've heard in doing that. So this seems to.
It's surprising, it's surprising that there isn't more of it though, because it is so impactful. That, I mean, we have, we all have marked in our minds the times that one or two citizens. Make a comment or tell us that we're doing something wrong or how we could do something better and it changes the direction of the whole council. And uh, so the return on the investment is huge, but at the same time. I think the uh, the point that it that it's intimidating is is a real one and uh. Let me say this, that the biggest um, fear in life is not, you know. Dying in a fire, you know, it's having to speak in front of people. So uh, yeah, I think I think the uh, come to the bennel stick and yell at councilman is, you know, that's a, that's a, that's more attractive.
So we have it down on the bottom as the foundation, but we've also listed it in terms of the strategies as the first, right? And we're saying like, whoops, we think that it should be an early focus. This one A, identify and maximize partnerships and go to the community because it's just so, you can't do anything else without that support. So I'm hearing some things that make me think this is generally resonating, but there's a question like, is this. We'll we'll want to get you up in a few moments and get your thoughts on the boards, but. Feel like it's following on conversations that we've had. I'm seeing some head nodding, so we're gonna hold it for now. This is a work session, so we're gonna get you much more comfortable writing up. Changes and suggested edits on the documents in a moment. But we are gonna pause and kind of take a deep dive into the housing options because. I think this is a place that we can help shed a little bit more light on the challenges that Snoqualmie faces. And I'd say by extension, like other communities like you and your your point in the comp plan cycle. Because this is like, it's pretty breaking news really what's happening and. I think your staff and staff and communities around you are really swirling and try to act, trying to think about how to handle these implications.
Yeah, so the the disclaimer here is that Brian and I in particular are not housing experts, but we work with housing experts. And so um, as this is breaking news, we wanted to to kind of share the information that we do have. Because this came up last time when we met with you on August fifteenth and really as we think about what diverse buying housing options looks like and prioritizing. Looking at your zoning map, there's kind of a sense of urgency to it that um, has been there, but I think um, is worth even taking a deeper dive into. So um, recently, the growth management hearings board um, came down with a decision in regards to Mercer Island's comprehensive plan. And so we just wanted to share that background of what we know and don't know. So just some background on Washington's Growth Management Act in general. Is that this is a state law requiring most cities and counties to prepare comprehensive plans, including the city of Snoqualmie. And thinking about how future growth plays into the planning of the city. A recent change to the Growth Management Act made um, really strengthened the housing goal. So it changed the language to say you don't just have to plan for affordable housing. You have to plan for and accommodate affordable housing to all economic segments. Really that came with two new requirements when thinking about a housing plan. The first is that cities have to update their zoning to accommodate those needs at each of those economic levels. So thinking about multifamily housing being affordable um, to some folks where a single family housing can be affordable to folks. Maybe making a hundred percent of the area median income or or higher. The other thing it did is it requires cities to really analyze what barriers there may be to development. And make adequate provisions to reduce those barriers. So an example is is parking requirements, for instance. So cities must identify ways to to reduce barriers to development to kind of allow for this this planning. Historically, there's been no statewide agency that actually enforces enforces uh, Washington's Growth Management Act. And the way to enforce it is through appeals to the Growth Management Hearings Board. So if someone feels like the um, comprehensive plan is not consistent with the Growth Management Act. They can appeal and make their case to the Growth Management Hearings Board. Yes, councilmember.
Okay, so if someone feels that a city's comprehensive plan, is that like any resident? Is that, who who could that be?
Anyone.
Be a resident or could be anybody?
The the main actor, I guess we've seen in this area is an organization called Futurewise. So the recent um. Yeah, the recent appeal was done by Futurewise and Futurewise claimed that Mercer Island's comprehensive plan wasn't in line with Washington's Growth Management Act. And so um, the Growth Management Hearings Board heard and released their like final decision in August. To to the surprise of many and kind of differing from the understanding of uh, and the interpretation of the Growth Management Act to date. Yeah, councilmember.
So uh, this is, it sounds to me like this is something where someone has to go through a lot of effort and legalese and stuff. It isn't just, they go fill out a form online and say, hey, they're not doing this, and then some investigation is launched into it. This is, someone has to come with a formal complaint. And they have to defend that complaint, explain that, uh, et cetera, et cetera. It's a lot of work. It's not just fill out a.
I don't actually know the details of um, how much work it is to bring it to the Growth Management Hearings Board. So this organization in particular is kind of organized around that, but.
So they have to make their case though.
Yeah.
And Futurewise is taking a proactive stance to looking at city comp plans to see if they feel that they are aligned and.
What kinds of sanctions are we talking about? And I I'm looking at both of you just.
So I haven't seen a city actually get sanctioned, so I'm not sure off the top of my head when I've seen. You know, a lot of times when the agencies are faced with sanctions, they kind of say, this is going to take plenty of time. Just trying to gauge like how, how onerous are these sanctions going to be? Obviously, we want to make sure that we're complying with law. There's no question about that. Just trying to gauge like whether this is like, you have a certain amount of time to get your ducks in a row or take away all of your funding for everything.
I think one, one implication could be like lack of eligibility for state funding, whether it's, uh, transportation improvement and work, uh, grant, um, funding for, um, community center and things like that. You just wouldn't feel eligible for state funding.
Yeah, I think it can be as significant as taking away a city's ability to tax its citizens, which has not been done before. I think the more likely scenario is, uh, asking you to redo your comprehensive plan if it's appealed.
This is for the, uh, adoption of the comprehensive plan, not for the implementation of it, it sounds like, right? Like if we adopt comprehensive plan, it meets GMA, everything's good, but, um, the things we are doing, uh, don't align as strictly. Sounds like that's not what this is.
That I think is kind of was the understanding to date and it may have shifted with the Growth Management Hearings Board decision. We can go to the next slide. Um, this is all very much in flux, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so the really, the key takeaways from this decision is, um, really the clearest one that we have is that, cities must implement all adequate provisions by their comprehensive plan deadline. Before this, the understanding from the Department of Commerce was that cities had five years to implement those adequate provisions. So once you're identifying, um, barriers to development and you say, here are, is our best attempt at reducing those barriers. The new hearing is saying that you have to implement them by your comprehensive plan deadline. So the, the, the best recommendation we could give to date would be do it as quickly as possible. Um, but that's the understanding from the hearing. Yeah, Councilmember Christian said.
For our comprehensive plan deadline, do we have a date that's set in that? It's understanding. You can grab the mic. Oh, my, the hand mic.
Either wireless or the.
Or you have to go stand over here. Are you ready? I got it.
Um, so our, our comprehensive plan was adopted by the council in December, right? But we still are working through conditional approvals through like Puget Sound Regional Council. And waiting for the growth targets to be completed. And so that should all be done this year, but then the conditions around those approvals from the state agencies, um, would be that we would have to go in and modify our zoning and make provisions for all types of housing needs. So that's, that's our conditional approval that we'll have to work through. Without getting the conditional approval, they would, uh, not give us the grant funding. We wouldn't even be eligible to apply for grant funding.
Parents give the, the breakdown, but there's a large portion of it that's in the zero to thirty percent, which I don't know.
Yeah, that's the permanent supportive housing and that issue has been the source of conversation with many cities. Because, um, as Maddie mentioned, they're, they're expecting cities to subsidize housing. So the question amongst especially small rural cities, like we are like, where are cities supposed to get the money to subsidize that housing? How does that work? Well, Commerce doesn't know yet. So. Services, we're not alone.
Yeah, so that's the other major implication from this, um, hearings decision is that, um, those adequate provisions must include sufficient subsidies and incentives to accommodate all housing needs at all income levels. So if you, um, get the seven hundred and nineteen units that the city of Snowqualmy is designated, um, you have to show that there are enough subsidies and incentives in place for that housing to be built. Which was a change from the understanding previously that had a, a sense that, you know, you have to do your best efforts as a city to allow for this housing to be built, um, but you're still at kind of the, the woes of the market, um, to, to make that.
The GMHB, they know what the M stands for, right? They, they, they know that, don't they? Okay.
Councilmember Cotton.
I think there's also a, a little kernel for us being in a flood plain where, you know, maybe getting, gyms, uh, changed by other regional authorities about, well, what can we do then in series? That's where our limitation is, is getting out of the flood plain for some of the development of, you know. There's not a lot, um, that we can, you know, build upon as far as. It's, um, it's, it's kind of a, it's going to be kind of like a push me forward type of a thing to be able to, you know, for us in some ways to progress forward is that.
I think Councilmember Cotton, that was the main reason behind, um, the request to reduce your housing targets from fifteen fifty to seventeen nineteen. So really taking into account that land capacity and, and like Brian said, it's a constraint that you'll continue to deal with. But you'll see the strategic plan really emphasizes, um, a need and a really reality to focus on infill development and redevelopment. And to be thinking about that as the, the next phase for the city of Snowqualmy. So we're diving like pretty deep into this as an implementation piece, just recognizing that things are shifting. And, and cities are kind of reeling from this decision and what to do. So we've got one more slide. Um, so, so what's next? Um, Mercer Island is appealing the Growth Management Hearings Board decision. This could probably might go to the state Supreme Court, but that resolution could take months or years. Um, the Department of Commerce is developing new interim guidance that is expected to be out, um, January twenty twenty six. So that guidance for cities to say, you know, what does this mean for us? Um, but cities and counties really do need to evaluate their risk of appeal of their comprehensive plan and fast track implementation of those adequate provisions as outlined in their comprehensive plan. So Mona just talked about how there's kind of additional work, um, to be done around Snowqualmy's comprehensive plan, especially with this reduction of targets. This new, um, hearing and really, uh, showing in good faith that the city is making an effort, um, to, to reach those targets with the limitations that Brian outlined. So it's a complicated, um, challenge for sure. Councilmember Christian said.
Is there any indication of their kind of new guidance out? Is there any indication of whether they're going to try to find a way for, so that we can do this? I'm guessing the answer is no and it's none.
It's short legislature and they're not going to have a lot of time to work on anything, so.
It's a real conundrum. And cities, you know, your, your peers are struggling as well. The reason we raise it is your strategic plan does focus on housing as a core issue, right? We also know that any city has, you know, constraints in terms of what their staff can do. This is going to take up a lot of your staff time, a lot of council time too. So we think it's important to raise it. It, it's going to come up in like sort of annual tactics as well. So tonight we're going to focus a little bit higher level. So we're starting, we're kind of zigzagging up and down in terms of altitude tonight. But wanted to lay a little bit of that grant groundwork. Um, we're going to ask you to mark up these posters, which have the vision, the mission for the city, the guiding principles, some of the context, it's got goals and strategies, and it does talk about housing. So make sure it's aligned and it says what you want it to say. Um, we need to workshop this and we need to sort of stay on pro, on, on task to get that done by November tenth, when hopefully a council will adopt it. But we have tonight and we have another meeting with you on October thirteenth where we can kind of touch it at two different levels. Is make sure you're comfortable, you're happy with the goals and strategies, the mission and the vision. You have to be happy with that. That's our primary scope of work. But we can also like take a little bit deeper dive and think about for the next year, how do you advance these strategies around housing or community partnerships and the like? And start to develop a, a year one work plan that's going to be a little bit more tactical. Recognizing that, you know, you don't have a lot of budget to put into those items because you're in that interim budget year. So we're going to transition like pretty significantly right now and give you each markers. And we're going to ask for you to mark up these posters. This is a copy of the draft strategy that hopefully you've all had a chance to look at. So it starts with the role of the city of Snowqualmy. So it's got a short mission statement up at the top, your guiding principles, which kind of describe, how we will work together, um, as a council and with staff. Um, and it's also got a vision for the future of Snowqualmy, describing what it is you'd like to see in the future. Here, and this is really important that reflects council conversations and council interests that we've had to date. So we've had a lot of conversation on these topics. And if you want to change what Maddie and Brian wrote on this document, now's a good time to do that and to really mark this up. Maddie, I think we're going to need the other stance because these are pretty wobbly. I think you have, um, this is a very dense page, but it's trying to put together the context. What is it? Where are you as a community? So it's kind of a version of some of the slides that are. Um, about growth is slowing down. And this I would say is kind of the heart or the meat of the plan. So there's three strategies, one is about, you know, you know, trusty community relationship. With two supporting, a goal of investing in the trusted community relationship, two supporting strategies. This one is about providing responses and fiscally responsible services, three supporting strategies. And then this last goal is around collecting housing options, right? The topic you were talking about and economic health and kind of grounded in, uh, looking at your land use capacity. Critical to both, uh, housing and. This last poster over here, that's the third year one I can bring up front, is looking at, how do you go through a year in the life of the city of Snowqualmy? How will you reflect back on what you've done? How will you plan for the next bite of the apple? That's the best analogy I have to this, kind of a five year strategy. And every year you want to think, okay, what's the next question that we want to take? Um, and this is set up to sort of reflect your biennial budgeting process. So it's a little more complicated than if you had a budget process. But we're looking at development of a full, full budget or also just the, an annual update to your budget. Um, so we're going to go until a little bit after seven o'clock and just ask you to come up and pen this up. And then Maddie and I will just facilitate a conversation through and make sure we capture your edits. So that in the next meeting on October thirteenth, we can bring back a revision to this that is a little bit closer to the mark if we're off the mark at all. Any questions in terms of the process? Grab a pen, please don't be shy. What, we, we want your markups. We want this to like really reflect your aspirations and your ideas for the community. And if you learn, if it's not doing that, help us get a little bit closer.
Yeah, I should more stable.
Okay.
Yes. Probably midsummer.
Yeah, twenty six to thirty seven.
So must have. Between thirty three and thirty five, um, twenty thirty three and twenty thirty five is what you go.
Is it physical, like literally?
Yeah. Do an asset here.
Get rid of this, this is scary.
Yeah, I hope that, yeah, I'm doing. Looking right here.
Set her back. Yeah, no, good. And to think of it over a five.
She gets thirty years. There's a lot of.
Yeah, like except I would, I would just move high quality to here.
Like we need to have these.
Oh, yes. Okay. So this right here was what I was writing for there, but they put it right here like that.
It might actually fit better under.
You think?
Yeah.
Was just reading that.
That's like how you work, if, if calling out partners and.
So basically.
We're both talking about collaboration.
Lot of text.
Oh, I didn't love it when I put that. Uh, mostly high school.
Oh, nice. Forgot to hear in the balance.
Yeah, chemistry.
No, we could do some equations in there. There's kind of an equation inherent. I think you're focused on trade offs. Oh, good. I, I, you know, yeah, I like that. I'm a soul boat that there are no solutions. There are only trade offs. A good, uh. Acknowledge. Been done, I think. What's left is a straight on.
We would have done it already.
That's right. Silver bullet. Yeah.
Yeah, ordinarily genuine beauty people.
Yeah, I've never liked that phrase either. I mean. I mean, how many, how many times have you been out walking, realizing that you've been in a snowball?
Seriously. Bob Ross painting.
Really need your fingers in more pies. You don't got that going on.
Have something if I don't know. And I know stuff of our.
Yes, yeah, yeah. It is a lot of time where always. It looks like every session has a state audit. So I do appreciate that aspect, especially since.
Wrong with this.
Right.
This is how it's supposed to be.
Right, so this isn't a problem.
The ongoing business of being.
Was an introduction into.
What's the, the context that we're setting up?
I mean, that's.
Yeah, which I mean, we could enact this.
Although, although a lot of it. Major capital. Funding our police department.
As with much of the country, we do have this problem of great, very able to build those things.
Wasn't exactly.
Yeah. This is your problem.
Twenty years now.
Which we can do as well.
I'm just saying.
We did our best as a society.
I think that there are some, some cliffs in the distant future, like twenty years from now.
Choose what I think. I think you were talking about.
That's what I. It could be captured here as something. There could be a structural problem.
That's right.
Yeah.
Right, but I feel like so far we've done it. You know, respond. So that we don't end up in that, at least for now, but your point.
Definitely in terms of the operating. Because.
Also. Including it with the.
I mean, lots of things.
Utilities. Lift stations.
Which I. It's free at first. Yeah, but that's the, the first one was free. Yeah, we gotta hit start.
That's like setting up.
I would say either if you're gonna do this, you would have to say, yeah, or you could just say.
Oh, I've told.
But I mean, Snowqualmy is.
Well, because Snowqualmy and neighbors should be northbound and with whole city and jump.
It actually be.
Yeah, well, I'm, well, it's kind of what do you, what do you guys think? And I, I kind of like.
Discussion.
I was just saying at the valley, I could do it's upward and lower.
And telling neighbors.
But I do believe they changed.
I'll show you guys some changes.
I'm gonna try to write these out.
Does that mean like?
I like.
So the original on this, what were the deferred investments you were starting to?
So. Before, like we have more parks. So that was deferred maintenance. Let's get everybody.
And C.
Is it your A? Things in A and C.
In the UK, like they have a lot of like changes.
In chemistry, I always call it a fire.
Corporations are a they, they're not a it. Also really confusing. Now, when I go to write things down, I was like.
But if it's.
I'm looking up here.
So Mohar, literary composition.
Well, sure, those things. Access to bonds. Or not, but they had grants.
Okay.
You know, what's left to figure.
Well, my, my. We, we actually look like. But let's keep it.
Where did she been watching? I know, because Cam was like. She was watching Yellowstone or something.
Very serious to the doctors.
Well, I mean, it did.
Yeah. And cattle.
It is AIL, right?
Yes.
Should there be like a. Other cities.
Actually, some type of. Numbers that we need to.
Zero to thirty percent, right? We don't have the services.
What, what points? So you guys can have a hundred million dollars handy.
I'm sorry, that board doesn't have the ability to save lead out hundred million dollars on food.
Okay, they say, well, they say.
I also thought the gross management, report manager act, I think a lot of.
He needs. Supporting. Post note, Kara. If you're gonna force it on us.
Get blamed for everything over here.
I tried to interview her. Kara wouldn't shut up.
And we're gonna start with talking about mission, guiding principles and vision. And then Brian will bring us through the strategies again. We'll have an opportunity to discuss those. Oh, just kind of reporting out what I heard. There was a good point about um. This last bullet or under vision around collaboration with neighbors and regional partners. That, that may fit better under guiding principles or may need to be in both places. Really guiding principles should be about how you work, what agreements you want to say as staff, as council, you're working towards. Whereas a vision, of course, includes, you know, what is the community that you're trying to build together? Um, so we've got some kind of small edits here, but heard that people may not be super happy with the current. Um, vision, so this says our vision is that Snowqualmy is extraordinarily genuine and it's beauty, people and quality of life. That's the current city of Snowqualmy uh, vision. We've kind of paired it with these expanded bullet points to say, you know, you've got this short, snappy statement. But what does that look like in practice? And then these are kind of those examples. Just for kind of a comparison sake, you did just adopt your comprehensive plan that has a specific vision in and of itself. So I wrote that out um, for conversation, whether we want to change this. Another option is, is to use this comprehensive vision. So this says Snowqualmy is a complete, sustainable and prosperous small city that provides a high quality of life. And maintains long-term value to the benefit of our citizens and the region. I'll just open it up for conversation. What, what were people's kind of reaction around the vision statement? And maybe desire to change that.
I think the extraordinarily genuine. Uh, it, it, the phrase. It, it's just hard. It, it looks like it's supposed to apply to all of the things in that list. So I think if it was uh, something about Suqualmy's extraordinary, extraordinary beauty. Um, and then uh, something about uh, the people and the quality of life. I mean, we do have ridiculously good-looking people here. But. But I think there was something, there, there was something that felt a little bit clunky about that, that phrase applying to the list.
Um, in terms of if we change this, right, is beauty, natural beauty, people and quality of life. Does that still kind of encompass in a short, snappy statement what you would want to highlight in a vision?
I don't understand what the vision is. That's, that's, that, I mean, I. Yeah, it basically seems to be saying our vision is that it's gorgeous here in every way. Um, which I, which sounds like a really happy accident. But I don't know if that's what we want our vision to be. Right? It seems to me like we want our vision to be something active that we can do. With that maybe.
Uh, I would just say take the one from a comprehensive plan.
Great, same. Just for consistency, you say.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm good with that, otherwise I was gonna suggest cheap. She doesn't really roll off the. To just like the exceptional. You know? People, the beauty, the quality of life, solid exception.
Yeah.
Yeah, also too, I was, um, just gonna, I'm telling you. That's my first. Vincent.
Which is me.
Vincent. Yeah, I, I think, you know, having something too, that's a little bit more objective and measurable. It's kind of what I would put in as well. So, you know, definitely, I like to tie in. My eyes were blown, I don't have. Absolutely. But the nature, people, there's a couple of other concepts out there like. That's a good tie-in, but just tying it all together and trying to make it something that's really objective and measured.
So what, what do people think about this suggestion to, um, really just get rid of two vision statements? You've got your one from your comp plan. Um, it's obviously a bit longer, but speaking to this action-oriented, maybe measurable, how does this read to you both?
I don't like.
What's that?
Okay, so I'm talking about not, not liking the word prosperous, prosperous.
I think it's applicable. Uh, but the part that I have, it have difficulty with is. Uh, maintains long-term value. Um. I don't know that it's, I don't know that it's really necessary. Small city that provides a high quality of life to the benefit of our citizens and, and region, I think, says the same thing. Um. Uh, I, I get, I, I wonder if the point is that we want to make sure that we don't. Uh. Take that for granted, that, uh. Uh, that we're constantly vigilant about maintaining that. I, I'm not. Uh, but I feel like that's encapsulated in provides.
Great, okay, so potentially. And my preference is always residents. Yeah, but citizens. I appreciate that. Um, on some of our cotton, do you want to speak a little bit more to the word prosperous with that break up for you?
Well, I. You know, I don't think I wanna like hang a vision statement on. Gosh, you want everyone to be rich. Cause that's what it sounds like to me. And that's not what it is as far as. Um, because we have people from all walks of life.
Makes to money in a way that.
To me, it's a little. Yeah.
And now you want to emphasize that.
Yeah, that was, that was a triple.
I know where it had to. It's true, I got it.
Right.
The challenge here is either we adopt the complan vision or we set it aside. It's hard to edit the complan vision as it's already been adopted. That's my concern here.
I was absent that day.
So, so one option, another option could be to not have a pithy short statement at the top. And I'm curious if folks like the set of bullets and say, our vision is bigger than we can say in a short, pithy statement. It's all.
I know this is kind of small, so I'll say, um, it includes being a welcoming and safe place to live, work and visit. Strong physical, social connections that bring the community together. Small town character enhanced by natural beauty, historic growth and local arts. Opportunities for health and wellbeing, resilient local economy, city services that are high quality and efficient and collaboration.
Uh, so two things. One is I'm fine with just not saying the vision plan up there, vision statement up there, uh, for that, yeah.
Okay.
But, uh, another thing on, you know, going back through and editing our vision statement on the comp plan. If we came back tomorrow, we would disagree with whatever was said tonight. And we'd be striking words and changing things. So I, I do think there comes a point where it's like, okay, but move on as well.
I like all the bullet points.
Okay.
So I'd be fine with that and just having the bullet points instead.
That really kind of covers. All the other things.
Yeah, I mean, this is really foundational in the conversations that we've had for this plan. Um. From our first counselor. So I think that's a great suggestion, right? Okay. Awesome. Um, so we're gonna move these out of the way, but are, were there any other comments that people wanted to share around mission or guiding principles? Before we move on to talking about context and this.
Can you explain the green arrows? Where is this going?
Oh.
Oh, well, I, I mean, I made, I made that note down at the bottom of the first page and then noticed that it would, that the note that I was making was at the bottom of the vision. First new mommy. Uh, the other, the other one, uh, was just about what we had talked about earlier about encouraging, uh, input from citizens or from residents. Uh, and. I. You know, we, we had that conversation about how that can be daunting for, for people, but it's really important for us to get input from, uh.
Are you moving the input down to foster and inclusive?
Well, it seemed like it could, it could fit with fostering an inclusive community as well. I initially made the note under the one above that, but then thought, well, it could also go here.
Great, okay. So kind of an active. Continuing to be active around encouraging input.
Yeah.
And then this, uh. So you just cross that one off. Is it starting at the other area? There we stand.
So I wanted to speak to that. So when I, uh, read that third from the bottom bullet point there about fostering an inclusive community, so, um. So I even thought that the part about, uh, communicating openly and honestly and all those things with everyone was in the first bullet point. When I read that, uh, third one, I guess, third from the bottom and third from the top. Anyway, uh, but, uh, I was thinking about, uh. People's, uh, sense of place in Stone Call me that, uh, perhaps we could move away from things like exclusionary zone. I, uh, that make it very difficult for people to feel like they, uh, belong here. Um. That sort of thing was what I was thinking as opposed to more specifically about engaging the public in, um, conversation and in planning and stuff. Cause I thought that that was the first one. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So there's a distinction between the first one being around engaging and encouraging input. And then the third one, speaking more to, uh, like creating a community that everyone feels welcome in. And.
Right, where they belong.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So maybe fostering is a little bit of a soft word. Creating. Like, do other people like that distinction to try to make these two distinct? So. Saying input is important, but kind of building or creating a community that's welcoming to all. So, so, okay. And then, yeah, planning practically for the future, collaboration, serving as trusted leaders. Um, and then regional partners either being reflected under vision or potentially here as well for getting schools. Um, oh, yeah, okay, so we'll talk about context and then Brian will talk about strategy. So, um, we heard some conversation, especially around the sustainable city services. So this context really outlines the change in growth that has happened in Stone Call me. Um. That. You know, the, what the strategy start to outline and really, um. We'll, we'll edit this, cause this kind of calls out the vision statement here. But to, to reach your vision of all of the bullet points that we discussed, this plan focuses on, um, housing, economic development. Sustainable city services, it's kind of core. Um, and it's meant to provide that context that Brian kind of walked through at the beginning with that slideshow. So. Before diving maybe into wordsmithing or specifics, how do you all feel about this context being included in a public facing plan? And does it cover the information that you'd want to share the public as they read about council and staff?
Thinking.
Is there anything missing that you? Want to make sure is included? You mean?
I was fine.
This person here. And then we had some conversation here, um, about how sustainable city services is really inherent in managing. And so is it worth calling out as key context for this strategic plan? Because it is kind of always a job as council and staff to, uh, manage city services as well. Um, and to be thinking about the structural challenges there, uh, perhaps.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if, if we're gonna call this out for the, uh. And yes, I would like them to be able to see the sustainable city services in the context of, that's really, I, I think a lot of people don't understand that. Why are you raising the, the rates? Why are you doing this? And it's because we're not covering, you know, what, what our costs are to provide this to you. And so, so I think reinforcing that this is something that we're trying to get it to be sustainable and so that they understand that part of it too. So I think that's important to keep for the public.
Yeah, so worth reiterating, especially in a short strategic plan. It's another opportunity to share that, you know? Yeah.
Uh, yes, and, uh, I think that where perhaps you could shift the focus to being something that perhaps we do need to work on. Um, since, uh. With regard to our operating budget and some of our programs, it seems like, yes, there is the crossover point that's always two to four years out. But we always meet it. It seems like we have been able to find ways to do that. That doesn't seem to be a big concern to me. It is important to explain to the public, though, that part of that means that we need more revenue, uh, sometimes, uh, just to keep up with inflation if nothing else. Um, but something that I'm concerned about. There could be a structural problem that perhaps does need to be addressed is, uh, um, infrastructure turnover. So we have, uh, a, a chain, uh, an aging fire station, aging police station. We have aging roads, uh, especially a really big one that, yeah, we just repaved it thankfully, uh, with the help of the state. Um, will that continue to be the case? That's still, uh, unknown. Um, but that would be very expensive for us to, to pay for it if it does end up at some point having to use them. Pay for. Um. Just out of city, uh, funds. So my point being that I think that perhaps there could be a structural problem that needs to be addressed. It's replacing those, those big assets.
Yeah, so call out to infrastructure and thinking, continuing to think about the future and responsibility.
Right. Yeah, there's a lot of streets on the bridge that they're getting to that point.
Is there comments about context before we go into strategies?
What does the blue say?
Um, the blue is the note, note to myself around the conversation. So, uh, should we be focusing on kind of the change in growth as the main context here? Um, but I appreciate House Marv Cotton's perspective that just important to kind of reiterate the ongoing context that. It's not just that the growth in Stone Call me is changing, it's the inherent nature of cities that might be worth calling out, so.
Right, um, folks are doing the work. I love it. Um, so we want to spend a few minutes on each of the three goals here. Um, we'll, we'll, I'll try to draw attention to the markups that we see, but this is really the meat of the plans. I want to make sure we're capturing. Right, it is here. I'm looking at the clock and we have about thirty-five minutes. We may just spend it on these topics and get your comments and your refinement. Sales through and have time. I think what we do is come back to each of the four recommended areas of early focus and ask you some questions about, you know what? What would you, what would your question be? What would you like to see happen? So that's kind of that lower level implementation planning. If we have time, we can also pick that up next meeting. So under the first strategy, which we said, you gotta lead with this, right? It's that trusted relationship with the community. Uh, we're recommending that use of partnerships. So i- in addition to the city continuing to push out social media and press releases and email and the like. Seek partnerships with organizations that can supplement. Doesn't serve as trusted intermediaries. Um, and particularly with groups that are under, often up underrepresented. Sure that those voices are kind of brought to the table. Um, and also explore pressures and trade-offs in these two-way engagement, including, um, the city academy. Sorry, for the citizens academy there and also this continuing to meet people. Whether it's council members getting out and having coffee, staff events downtown or something. So this is an important edit here to the correct name, the city academy. Any other questions or thoughts? Book right here. And to beyond what's being suggested, so, but I just want to pause and make sure.
Uh, I'm very curious to see and to hear what any of my fellow council members think that we could do differently for the, the bullet point, uh, under A.
Mm-hmm. Around. Partnerships.
Right, with, um, groups that are often underrepresented government.
Mm-hmm. Our partner, Matty, sorry, Issa tried to model this in doing the engagement. And if you look at where we approach. And there were groups that we worked with. We don't have facts in the city of Stone Call. You all have more than we do, but I think there may be some gaps. And yet there are organizations out there that you. Kind of building on that effort.
Hey, like.
Who is it who's not? Concerns with, you know, with us in more direct ways and helping. You can see a year one work plan of kind of identifying where do we have gaps and what are their org? Be the chamber even, right, as an intermediary. Be a group that represents, um, the, the, um, Asian community town or other groups.
Do we just say organizations on there or do we say organizations and community leaders?
Uh, we say partnerships with, I hope, from groups that are often represented. And just as partnership, essentially.
Exactly. I mean, that could be one way to be a little bit more specific. I think Issa did a great job of connecting with kind of formal organizations like the, um, chamber. But also if you identify community leaders, right? People that have a network, um, that, like, they might not read the newsletter, um, posted on the official city website, let's say. But, um, what would it look like to have kind of a network of community leaders that you reach out to and share content with? And they can share with their communities. So it speaks to, you know, the other bullet point around a possible two-way communication. Um, we're just kind of building. That, the grassroots engagement.
You bump us down to the, the second, um, goal here. You'll have another opportunity to come back and look at this, so keep thinking about it and study that. So this is around that providing responsive. Well, city services. So the first strategy is making efficient use of resources. We had some conversation about what was meant by this first bullet. And it's really around the deferred maintenance that, like, we want to make sure that you're continuing to fund and maintain your capital programs. So investing in the assets that you have to keep them in a state of. Uh, maybe before adding additional assets into your portfolio. That was a clarification here. Um, and then in terms of seeking to, you know, maintain, so this is kind of refining and maintaining your existing levels of service. Um, it was suggested to obtain police accreditation as well as fire, um, and that that would be achievable if a five. And then I see a suggestion here to replace aging playground equipment.
Under the first one, I think. Infrastructure.
Mm-hmm.
That needs me. Is that?
That's his first one, yes, yeah.
Same. Sorry, I.
It does, capital programs and maintaining infrastructure. Yeah, we'll, we'll work on the link.
Sorry.
Yeah, so we'll refine that. I do want to call out the second one, continue to audit revenue accounts. Your staff would appreciate council support in doing this, is you have revenue tools that aren't always capturing all the revenue that should be coming by. The city. It's an enforcement mechanism. It's not the most fun thing for either staff or elected officials to do. But when you don't have all the V and O taxes coming your way for the. It is something that staff could use council, elected officials support in, in pursuing that. And I, I think it's a matter of equity as well as fiscal responsibility, is you have some folks paying and you have other folks who may not.
Yeah, I think we're in the middle of that audit right now, aren't we?
I think so.
Yeah.
And there may be other revenues.
Sorry, bounce, bounce right. On the police accreditation, I think that's a worthy goal. I know that fire. Fire accreditation has been a heavy lift. They've worked really hard on, on that, that there's a lot. That goes into accreditation. And I'm wondering if police accreditation at this time. Should necessarily be a goal. We already have some, some really big challenges to face with rightsizing our police department. And all that. It might be, it might be. Early to, to be focusing on. On police accreditation when we have such huge goals for our police department. Right now.
It's on their list. I mean, they have been working on it for a couple of years.
Right on. And I think that's fabulous. I just, I might, I would, I would say that. With the challenges that we, that we're facing in the next year, that.
They're talking about within five, eight years.
Yeah.
Not, not next year, but.
Right, it's a process, so.
Are you more comfortable with the five year timeframe?
No, I, I, I recognize the, the five year time, timeframe and I'm, and I'm not putting it past the police department. Being able to do that. I, I think we have a great police department, but, but what I'm saying is I would understand if they were focused on. Making sure that, that we're getting right sized. If it goes six years, I'm okay with that.
Why don't we try crafting a bullet here and we can work with you? Right, maybe addressing both of those topics, right? Because that's a, that's a current challenge as well. Then adapt and then like maybe explore opportunities to like achieve accreditation as well. We can follow up with you.
I, I feel like maybe that, maybe that is two separate bullet points, or maybe that is something. That needs to be up there is about, I don't know what the right phrasing is, but something to the effect of maintaining levels of service with the police. While dealing with the state of flux.
So as of tomorrow, your small personnel is right sized.
Alright, well, let's get started on this accreditation.
Still covering two cities for the next. Not following anybody on your small personnel is the right size.
It seems to me that the department is still dealing with, with things that are in flux. Maybe perhaps it's not staffing. But I think just finding a new state of equilibrium. Speaking very broadly and generally with regard to the police department could be something that, that is important for us over the next, maybe year or so. And perhaps that's still worth a bullet point, maybe under something that's like recommended early focus.
Good, good. So we'll take a crack at modifying that language and bring it back. I'm going to bring us here to third goal, proactively increase housing options and economic vitality. So the first is around the land use, the capacity for infill development, redevelopment. So updating the future land use map and the zoning map, which is sort of an extension of your comp plan process. Making sure that reflects the future land uses that you want to see in the community. There were some comments here that I will have to ask you all. One says Lomar and the other says potential variances for flood zone. And then zone rich. Anyone speak to that?
Yeah, letter map supervision. So it's because there is a flood plain, I think one of the things that would be helpful is if you have the Lomars, that might be some of the.
What does Lomar stand for again?
Letter of map provision. So they basically evaluate. This water flow and flooding and determine if, if what's in the flood right, right now.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure, so the A is part of map.
Zoning the ridge. I think when we look at a zoning map, sure, we should look at the whole city. If we're going to go into zoning, we might as well. Take another track of the whole shebang. Not sure how long it's been, but especially the ridge, if you look at our zoning map, it's a big beige blob. That just, I, I think that has overstated its usefulness.
Can I tie that to this discussion about engaging the R O A and looking at A D U's multifamily dwellings?
I think the zoning goes beyond the accessory dwelling. So still leave those separate bullet points.
I will say on this item, engaging the R O A, I've heard there are two different sort of points of view expressed by council and by staff. One is like, let's engage the R O A. And the other is, let's look at a map, do some analysis first and see if there's going to be a return on that, because that would take. Some staff capacity, maybe some political capital to do that and have that conversation. So there could be a study or an evaluation of the capacity for A D Us or other changes before you sort of begin that conversation.
Just love to general take volumes because it could be used, could be tiny houses, could be duplexes. But I, I think the conversation council for Johnson. Really is going to be around the.
We're going to tie these two together and. Okay, okay. We'll make some revisions based on that conversation.
With regard to engaging the R O A, it's possible, I suppose, that the. Folks who serve on the R O A, the data is falling into say, nope, not going to do anything. We're not interested in affordable housing or any of that stuff. I highly doubt that that's going to happen to people who are on there. So I, I think that they'll be wanting to play ball with us and are probably eager to do so.
I think it takes a.
Oh, sure, but these people who are on the board of the R O A would be involved in making that process occur.
Starting that dialogue and. There was a similar discussion around annexation. We noticed on the slides and on the boards, we don't talk a lot about annexation. We talk a lot about infill and redevelopment and sort of. Using your existing, you know, property or, or developable land as efficiently as possible. Annexation I know is out there and look at a map and sort of have ideas. But it, it seems like a bit of a stretch. It seems like a long shot. There was a modification here to identify true strategic opportunities for future annexation around housing call. So kind of an assessment again of like, what are the practical, like, the practical path forward with annexation? Not a full blown feasibility study. That takes a lot of work and you'd hire open things and do all that, but like really. Kind of work up like, what's the strategy here? And is it a practical strategy that we can advance? Politically with, you know, the, the regional growth management bodies that exist and is there. Community appetite, like kind of do that assess.
Could you speak a little bit to, for the U G A, or ideally to N X? How the targets would impact? I mean, is it fair to say that? Yes, if it's part of U G A, there are affordable houses and targets that.
They would come along with it, right? As would any deferred maintenance and as would like those needs to sort of upgrade infrastructure to meet city standards and the like. So. You could do a very complex analysis. You'd hire a great consulting firm to do that and they'd look at like, what's the net fiscal cost? You'd have to engage people who live in that area and see if they want to come into the city or if they want to stay out of the city. So. It could be a very in-depth study, and I think what we're suggesting here is like a higher level look about like. How much is it worth for us? You can continue to talk about it. And I would rely on staff for that rather than, you know, anyone else. Mona's got her hand down.
Well, I just wanted to remind everybody, we want to think about. Pretty much at capacity. And for more jobs, so not just housing, they also got the job target.
Maybe they think about everything.
Did you realize how hard this job would be? Goodest suggestion here, so working with regional partners to enhance workforce housing and senior housing. Comfortable with that change? Adding, I think, so continuing to support tourism with development of the River Walk, public uses such as the Roundhouse, the Model Train Museum. The Mill Site. Not quite a public use, but it also has opportunities to sort of connect with, with tourism and redevelopment. And then a suggestion down below to revitalize all avenue for. Falls Avenue? With these, these changes? So we're going to make a round of edits based on tonight's good conversation to everything from the mission statement, the vision statement, all the way through the strategy. We'll also start some layout work so that when you see the document next time, it's going to look a little bit more like a public facing strategic plan. But I would love in our, in our remaining twenty minutes, if we can hold you to twenty more minutes to like. Touch on the four areas that we've identified as potential early areas of focus. And just kind of get some popcorn thoughts here. About what are the questions you might have? Like, this is down at the work plan. So take off the five year timeframe and put on a one year timeframe, which would be twenty twenty six. You've already adopted your budget, I mean, for twenty twenty six, so you don't have a lot of new sort of flexibility. So it's kind of a planning building year, but how do we advance these? Four areas of focus? And what are your questions? Or what would you want staff to think about? Because you might say staff, could you put together a work plan for year one? Around these four areas. So this is a little bit noncommittal and just like on the, off the cuff, and Matty will take notes and we'll kind of bring it back in the next meeting of. Like a potential like startup of work plan. We talked a bit about this idea of maximizing partnerships and kind of getting out and meeting people where they're at and restarting the city academy.
Sorry, can you read A?
A up here?
Yes.
Identify and maximize partnerships with community organizations and community leaders to serve as trusted intermediaries.
First bullet point, politically.
Grow partnerships that help gather feedback from groups often underrepresented in government to ensure a range of voices shape city decisions.
Well, I think one thing we can bring up. Those groups.
Yeah.
And leaders. But the other thing would be, I could see within a year we could start.
Identifying for gaps and groups and individuals who might help address those gaps and then have like getting out. Any more as council members, encourage staff to do that as well, maybe. Matty, any thoughts on that one? I know that's a topic you've spent a lot of time thinking about.
I think that that's a great suggestion to, we can massage the language, but, you know, what is the commitment of this group to? To say, we, if you're going to serve as a council member, you know, we encourage. Is it, is it a coffee chat? I know there was some talk at the beginning of summer around. You all, I saw you there. You attend the public events, but is there a role as kind of a representative of the city that you want to play? So it can be a conversation that you have in your first year, maybe some agreement that comes out.
Completely off script and turned out to ask that. Are there items that you would think about when you think about engaging partnerships or getting out and meeting people?
I think we have a lot of work to do there. And that's not. Oh, it's going to take time. As far as, I mean, we have some that exist, but I think we have the ones that's at that depth.
And I appreciate you saying it. We're talking about year one work plan. We're going to bang this out and that's not the way we should work, right? So it's about planting seeds, building relationships, cultivating that. Anyone else have a thought?
So one of the things that's on my mind is that we're all stretched to some degree with the liaison appointments we already do have. And then trying to add more just stretches us that much more. So I wonder if there, there could be. Other ways to think about either reprioritizing our liaisons or. Finding community members to get them involved in those organizations that we are already liaisons to. That perhaps they are not already a part of, they're not aware of it. Whatever it is, but just, just keeping that in the back of my minds.
That was all I was saying.
Right, then figuring out perhaps ways that we can give them incorporated into already existing structures. There is, as I said, things that perhaps have been a lower priority already to find out that there is a more pressing priority that isn't being addressed right now. Maybe swap those out. But just consider it.
Yeah, I was just thinking about our current workloads with the liaison assignments, the committees. Either opportunity to engage in social. Just kind of maybe thinking personally. Social media that may be effective.
They have to sit.
Maybe we can reach more people though.
And to, to Councilman Washington's point, if he's doing that, that. People aren't going to notice the things that I mess up on.
They'll screenshot everything.
Up in the ridge, there's different homeowners associations. I think maybe tapping into some of those, the different neighborhoods. Organizations we should attend.
There about to support, compliment on Cotton for your idea of like kind of mapping this first, and I just to inject a note of caution, right? It's like. You want to map the community and identify the gaps and those gaps will by definition not be people you know. So you want to go outside of your own networks to think about who are we not? Right, so I think some mappings and strategizing is like a good.
So I think Councilmember Benson and I will jump right on talking to the downtown R O As.
Are there R O As downtown? Yeah, yeah, we'll get on, we'll get on the R O As downtown.
On the corner watching the. Park in Meadowbrook, watching the traffic for school. Talking to one of the neighbors and he already texted all of his neighbors. And knew that we were there, right?
There was the neighborhood.
That's how you can.
Alright, I'm going to move us down to the second short term priority, recommended early focus, and I'm, I'm going to go unorthodox here and ask staff for comments. So this is saying make efficient use of resources, right? So existing resources. So the ideas here. Are about looking at deferred maintenance funding and maintaining your capital programs, auditing and revenue accounts. Possibly extending the life cycle or replacement cycles for vehicles and other assets, try to get more use out of them. Exploring regional partnership opportunities and continuing to calibrate staff. And city services with community priorities.
You know, you could live. Spot right there. Mentioned that I think that under that first part, that is early focus. I'm taking that as meaning within like the next year or so, that we should have something about. The police department.
Okay, so adding this.
Yeah, not the police accreditation, but just. Yeah, about dealing with it state of flux.
Yes, yeah. So that would go sort of the adaptation. Yes, yeah, so that would go sort of the adaptation and level of service would go up.
Oh, I see, yes, yeah.
This would stay down here, yeah, okay. Good, anything else anyone would add, is either a question or Drew, thank you.
So I want to make sure that we emphasize that we're seeking to maintain current service levels and that we're not trying to raise the service levels necessarily. That's where a lot of our time and attention should be focused. It's what we're setting up here for the most part through the strategic planning process, what are we going to simplify and what are we going to clarify for staff? On for the next two years. Departments and what they're expected to do, it's going to divide our attention, it's going to take us away from these priorities or top priorities that. Let me for the time, space and financial resources overall. Devote that to the highest priorities of the city, which is what we're putting in this document.
If I vote enough for three?
I'm sorry, sorry, number three, so. Increasing housing options and economic vitality?
Yeah.
Goal number?
Goal number three.
Yes, goal.
Yeah, yeah. Yep, so this is going to take a lot of work, is what you're saying.
Right, it's going to take a lot of time, effort, financial resources as well. So, you know, we're going to the departments are going to come to us eventually at some point to say, I need new staff, or I need X amount of additional resources. And I'm going to have a tough time having that conversation. Trap plan that you talked about. And how we need to pivot our resources to help accomplish this, accomplish those goals that we're trying to set. So when we start to pack in the departments and their desires overall into the goal number two, that's going to diminish our ability to then allocate those resources in other ways to goal number three, so I'm just weary of that. We got to make sure that we're very clear on what we're prioritizing. Otherwise, this is just going to become the muddled mess, this would be hard for us to implement.
Completely agree, I do think that the police department is a special situation at the moment, just why I pulled them out specifically, but I do agree that we can't go down the list, say, need to do this for every single department.
So is replacing aging playgrounds high priority? I think it's a good question, right, so now we're starting to add in some parks, because I was going to raise parks as an example to say, parks isn't really well represented here, because like, it's, we know it's important to you, but you're focusing elsewhere, you've done a lot with parks, right?
Yeah.
So one possibility would be, that also isn't in the early focus, those further out. So that's under that part B there, perhaps it could be rolled in with the previous bullet points. Maintain and improve.
Oh.
Trail connections.
Road and trail to sort of absorb it.
Yeah, and it parks, something like that in there.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not a next year issue.
Though I do think Drew raises like a excellent point here, which is there's a lot of words on this slide, a lot of energy on this slide, I'm sorry, on this page, and Matty's whole presentation earlier about like sort of the need to focus on housing is an imperative. And in both, maybe a social imperative now has become a political imperative, fiscal imperative. And there's also like in our logic that we talked through earlier on the strategic plan, you're really hoping for commercial development as well to help to offset the burden on your taxpayers. So you want to do a lot here, so the more you do here, the less you have just a bandwidth to do elsewhere.
Want to monopolize, sorry, I just have so much to say here. So on that, I believe that we do have positions budgeted that are not currently filled and can be developed, is that correct? There's at least one that could help out with that, and maybe that one isn't going to be.
Permit type of level position.
You're like, we may need to budget for another position though.
So let's keep in mind as well that we're still attempting to address pollution in the North Bend contract at this point, so without happening, we brought to council during. It's a budget recommendation. And we've had some conversations around. Instead of that, based on that conversation.
Those led to additional.
But I've got to keep at the forefront of my the additional constraints that we're dealing with, so. It's just, it's at the forefront of my mind, we're going to be going into mid-by年 budget review process at this stage, so I've got Jana upstairs now right now.
He's locked up.
Waiting in the wings.
But we're still trying to figure out what are we going to do, right, in terms of the budget? Something firm that we could work with. So we're plugging. Forecasting, so we'll be presenting updated financial forecast, council. October-ish, November-ish.
Good meeting, Brian.
Yeah, sorry.
Matty and I had the observation and looking at this, that there's a lot here for community development to do. I don't know what the solution is right now, but I'm glad it's been raised, as like, this is a lot of focus, a lot of time. There's a lot of sort of higher order, long-range planning to be done here and the housing challenge, so I'm pretty aware of like where we are in terms of time tonight, I think we should pick this back up when we're back with you in a couple of weeks to look at a final plan and think about, like, how do we operationalize this, or how do you operationalize this in the first year?
Please, ma'am. We'll stay, see, I don't, the annexation area. So there's retention project going in, an unincorporated in county that they're going to be going to. Battery? Battery facility, it's about twenty-five acres, and so what we're counting on for commercial might be taken up by, by that, and so, so that there's a I guess, so how, how to strategize and figure out. Addition area then.
Thank you very much, this was like a good work session, I appreciate you doing the markup, certainly engaging with us in conversation. We're going to take a lot of this back to the office, kind of revise this and bring it back to you, just like. Where you're not adopting at that meeting, you're getting another chance to look at it. Try to marry some of the first year implementation with that, but we'll only have an hour, so it'll be a little bit more of a compressed conversation. And then we hope to bring back to you a final recommended draft in November tenth for adoption. You would not be adopting the year one implementation plan, that's a work plan level, if it's yet adopted by council. I'll turn it back to you.
Yeah, thank you, it's a great conversation, it's very exciting to, to, you know, to produce the plan. So any other comments for them, others will entertain a question.
Second.
By consideration, I think my, all in favor, C I? The opposing, the B R turn.